Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We do have a forum now, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 5:37 PM. And I just asked if I can take my mask down so that everybody could hear me a little bit more clearly and the listening ones are judging, so I'm hoping that's comfortable for those that are watching as well. We need the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And Jason Benson, I haven't picked on you, so would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance through the flag.
Thank you, Jason.
No problem.
All right. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Jason, Megan, anyone? All right, I would like to move 8D, which is our recognition of our teachers, to right after we finish these adjustments, so that would be now if there's no other adjustments. If that's okay with you, is that okay, Megan, Jason?
Yep, that's a great idea, Priscilla.
Okay. All right. Let's start with... Mary Lou. Would you like to stand up here so people can see you? And I'm going to ask your principal to talk about you.
Oh. So Bellas Falls Middle School Teacher of the Year, Mary Lou Masugo, is easily recognizable by her quick smile and wit while working with students, colleagues, and community members. She is truly a part of the very fabric of our school community. She works tirelessly for all students. When they come to her out of interest, she pulls them closer and provides additional opportunities for them to grow their skills. Year to year, the assignments she designs change in order to engage and excite her students. Many years ago, Mr. Quadrow had an epiphany on the level of her skill as a teacher when he was at a neighboring high school looking at student work. Apparently, it did not hold a candle to what he had seen in our school under her tutelage. She put the time into developing her skill in designing projects in such a way that when displayed, when combined, when viewed, they are an amazing statement of student success. In addition to her amazing art classroom, she has worked in our after-school program with the association, displayed work throughout the area of towns, as well as building and maintaining numerous gardens, one of which is right outside my office. All of this is done with her students. We are very proud and very happy that Mary Lou is our Teacher of the Year.
This is a certificate from the board, just a recognition of your dedicated and valuable service to the students at Bellas Falls Middle School. Ooh, you're up. And again, I'm going to ask the principal to talk because she knows you better than all of the rest of us.
Julie has been an important member of the Bellas Falls Middle School community for over 30 years. Her position depends on building successful relationships with families that usually span at least four years and in some cases, multi-generations. To many of the teachers and staff at the middle school, Julie is seen as having a great sense of humor, is able to see the positive in the most difficult situations, and has many stories to share, and is often the unofficial mentor to many. Julie works with some of the most challenging students at our school and does so with a positive attitude and the patience of a saint. Her ability to teach all subjects and provide real-life experiences keep her students engaged. Most importantly, in her classroom every day is a new day and a fresh start. Because of the nature of her classroom, it's important that parents and families feel supported. I have personally witnessed this in person as she has made families feel welcome, heard, and respected during what has been a very difficult transition. Outside of the classroom, Julie is a dedicated supporter of our school athletics and is often seen running the clock for our many basketball games. We are very proud that Julie is also our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
This is again an appreciation of your devoted and valuable service to the children of Bellas Falls Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to comment too that I've known both of them for many, many, many years. I've always been impressed with everything that they have done. So congratulations, ladies. Jamie is not here, but Laura, do you want to address hers? Is she here on Zoom or not?
I believe she is.
I believe she is on Zoom.
Okay, so if you would like to talk about her, that would be good. We did not recognize her last year, and I know it's been on your website and out there, but we'd kind of like to, as a board, recognize her, so...
Sure, I would love to. So Priscilla has asked that I recognize Jamie Douglas publicly again for being Windham Northeast recipient of the 2020 UVM Outstanding Teacher Award, and I am more than pleased to do so. I shared this with my report to the board during its April 2021 meeting, and Jamie was honored at UVM's virtual live ceremony on April 7th at 4:00 PM. Although, as we know, it's not the same as being recognized locally and by our school board, so thank you for this opportunity again. Jamie is the 4th grade teacher at Saxon's River Elementary School, where she has taught since 2006. A master at providing engaging and differentiated learning experiences, building meaningful relationships, embedding technology, and simply having fun, Jamie's classroom is a place where students embrace new challenges and take risks in their learning. She works collaboratively with colleagues and families to meet the needs of her students and to truly understand who they are as learners and people. Her lessons are carefully crafted with student interest and choice in mind. Through modeling, Jamie inspires her students to be kind, do their best work, have fun, and love learning. Here's a few quotes from her students. "She's a great teacher." "She's funny." "She's cool, awesome, and fun." "She's amazing." "She's my favorite teacher." "I love her." "Friendly, funny, she teaches me." "She makes everything fun, and we are always learning things." Congratulations again, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. We don't always have such a great thing that we can do and to celebrate our teachers and show how amazing they are and just that we really appreciate them. These are the ones that got these awards, but we know all of our teachers are out there just doing everything they can for our students. So just appreciate all of them and let's show our appreciation for them one more time with a round of applause. Thank you. Next on our agenda is communications and public comments. I'm going to ask that anyone wishing to comment on masking hold their comments for the discussion under 7D. I will now open up the comments to anyone else that wants to speak on anything else. Thank you. Is there anyone that is out there?
Seven. You've got no one. You've got no one.
Okay. So as you're showing at this time, I'll move on. Review and approve the board minutes for August 16th is the first one on there. So are there any corrections that you see, Megan or Jason?
I didn't have any.
Hey, Jason? I do have a couple, so let me go ahead. On the second page at the... That's not the second page, 1, 2, 3, 4. At the bottom of the third page, there's Jason Terry's motion.
Which date?
August 16th. At the top of the next page where it says Priscilla Lambert, that needs to be moved down. That was not an amendment to Jason's motion. It was a motion, so that whole paragraph needs to be moved to under the vote on Jason Terry's motion in that space. And it needs to say Priscilla Lambert's motion... Priscilla Lambert moved to... Moved that the board followed the state suggestion. And the rest of it's okay. And then the paragraph under Jason's vote should read, "Priscilla Lambert accepted as a friendly amendment to add that all students have the option to remove their masks," and the rest of it's okay. Those are the only two corrections I have. Are those okay with my board members? Megan?
Good with me, Priscilla. Sorry, I was just reading the exact spot you're talking about. I see it, yep, that's fine with me.
And Jason?
Sounds good to me, yes.
I need a motion though, one of you.
Oh, moved. To accept the August 16th board minutes with the added corrections from Priscilla.
Jason, do you want to second that?
I second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to accept the minutes as corrected. Take your vote, Megan?
Yes.
And Jason? How do you vote, Jason?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motions will be corrected and filed as approved. All right, September 2nd minutes. Are there any corrections to those?
None from me.
I have a question for you, Megan. Weren't you the one that led the pledge on that day? Just to hear. Megan?
Sorry. Was that when, this past meeting, when I asked everybody in the audience to please be really loud in case I messed up, then yeah, that must have been it. That was me.
Okay, so it needs to be corrected with your name instead of mine. I know I did not lead it that night.
Nice catch. I went right over that.
It's easy to do when you're reading them. That's the only correction I had. You guys are okay if you take a motion?
Yeah, so I'll move to accept the September 2nd minutes as... Is it as amended? How do we say that, as corrected?
As corrected.
As corrected by Priscilla Lambert.
Jason, do you want a second?
I second.
Okay, so it was moved and seconded that we accept the motion set without meeting minutes for September 2nd as corrected. Megan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so those have been accepted. All right, we're up to principals' reports. Susan, do you want to start since you're here?
Sure, absolutely. Let me just pull up here. The Bellas Falls Middle School school year started with a bang. Both staff and students were excited to be back in the school full-time, and students have quickly acclimated to their new schedules and are adapting to the rigor of the academically challenged. We celebrated the first week of school with Kona Ice, which was enjoyed by all. Our cross-country team had their first meet this past Friday on the 17th, with all runners doing an amazing job. Our first evacuation drill went very well. Our students were complimented on how well they followed directions. We will begin our fall MAP benchmark testing for all students on September 29th. Currently, we have one teaching position that needs to be filled. I would like... I'd like to personally thank Megan Applegate in Hart's Place for the generous donation of student school supplies. We greatly appreciate them, thank you. Our current enrollment is as follows. Grade 5, 4 to 7 students. Grade 6, 41. Grade 7, 72. Grade 8, 70, for a total of 200 and 30 questions. Madam Chair, that's the extent of my report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board members?
I just wanted to say that, you know, being a parent at the middle school, it's gone off incredibly smooth, and I'm very appreciative of everything the staff is doing to keep the wheels turning in this kind of ups and downs, topsy-turvy time. Thank you to everybody involved in it. I've heard nothing but great reports from two very tired children every day.
Jason, do you have anything?
Not at the moment, I'm sorry.
Okay. Can I ask the superintendent if he's heard anything on the possibility of a handicap parking space?
I have not heard anything about a handicap parking space. I'm just being eight days in. It's... That hasn't come across my radar, but I will work with Leslie Johnson and the town to see what we do about that.
Sounds great, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it, the two of you. Okay, Carrie, how about you?
Okay, good evening, everybody. So just like you were saying, Sue, our start has been very strong in many ways, but then also there's been a little setback on the COVID parts of things. So we have had some students, staff, and some community members just quarantined for a little while too. So we're a huge shout-out to all of the staff at Central. Nurse Jen and Cindy Rounds did an amazing job of helping us do contact tracing and letting families know what was going on. And then Jamie Campbell and Jane Stewie have done a fabulous job of shifting and moving to remote teaching. So our students are remote right now until next Monday, the 27th. So currently, we have MAPS testing scheduled for September 29th, September 30th, and October 1st for make-ups, and we're gearing up for... We have right now 150 students. We have 29 in kindergarten, 22 in grade 1, 32 in grade 2, 29 in grade 3, and 38 in grade 4, our largest class. Today, we had a delivery of our playground mulch and working on the necessary repairs of some equipment. So our Phase 1 of playground restart and reinstall is going well, and we're hoping to finish up everything else very soon. So I appreciate everybody at TMG and all the other groups that are working together. So our playground is safe and ready to go for everybody. So unfortunately, there was a setback due to COVID with getting this ready before school starts. We apologize for that, that wasn't our end, it was on the equipment manufacturer's end. So we are hopefully ready to go very soon. That's pretty much about it. And again, just a shout-out to Central for doing an amazing job. I actually had to quarantine too, so we're back in action and ready to go. Any questions?
Carrie, can you tell us a little bit more about quarantine? That was certain groups, right? Not all of your... not the whole school?
No, it was one classroom in one grade.
So we're really blessed to have the nurses, both at the middle school, your school, and at Saxon's River that are just doing a fantastic job at this time.
The nurses deserve huge kudos across the board.
Megan, did you have any questions?
No, I just, I think all the nurses, but specifically Nurse Jen at CES needs a cape because she's amazing, and she has fielded some of the weirdest questions from me with so much patience and grace and like, calm down, Megan, you're gonna be okay. I adore her, and having someone take the lead in this contact tracing with her kind of patience and kind of her presence is like, it's gotta make all the difference in the world with all nervous families and everything. And I just can't say enough about the team and how they handled that situation.
Thanks, Megan. Jason?
No, it sounds like everything's worked out pretty well and it's under control and appreciate that.
Jason, I can't hear you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I can't hear you. Could you kind of start over?
No, no, I don't have too much to say, other than I'm glad to hear that everything was handled very quickly, and I appreciate the fact that the nurse, like Megan said, I don't want to coddle her too bad, but that's very good, thank you.
And I'm sure we're probably, Mr. House, in the same situation with the school warning signs. I did notice going into the high school area and the compass area, there's school written on the road on the way, so... And I don't think there are for Central, that might be something to look into as well. Also, I know Carrie had mentioned the rubble that's trickling down when we visited. It's coming down the road from above, and so that's another thing maybe to put on your radar to kind of see what the town can do about cutting down on that.
Yeah, definitely. I remember Carrie said she was out there with a broom sweeping it up at one point, so, you know, we... I was not aware of the extent of it, so we'll warm up at the same time.
Great, thank you so much for that. Okay, if there are no other questions, the business office, Laura, you're up.
Priscilla, did you want me to give a report?
Oh, did I skip... Oh, Laura, I apologize. I am so sorry.
Don't worry.
Oh, that's my... Deceiving thing. I had listened to you with your report on Jamie, so I was thinking I'd encourage you. Absolutely, Laura. Sorry, Laura.
That's okay, no worries. So much like Sue and Carrie reported, we two are off to a terrific start. We've spent the first few days building community and establishing and modeling and practicing our expectations so that our environment is kind and respectful and so that routines are known and they go smoothly. Our enrollment is at 76. We have 14 students in kindergarten, 11 in first grade, 16 in second, 15 in third, and 20 in fourth. Staff vaccination rate, I know that was a question last time, and so we have 26 staff members and 26 out of 26 responded. 24 of those have been fully vaccinated, 0 partially vaccinated, 2 preferred not to answer, and 0 not vaccinated. I want to thank Nurse Jen Vaughn for collecting the data, and she too has been super responsive and very, very helpful. She's like my wingman, I feel like, during COVID and certainly helping lead the... Lead all the questions and working with families. Also, like Carrie reported, our playground update, so our new swing set was officially installed last week, and wood chips were spread today. We do have one challenge that remains, and that's dogs using the playground after hours. And while we do have signage, we're still finding that there are... Dogs are still using the playground, so ask the community to please spread the word that dogs are not allowed on school grounds, so please and thank you. We'll have our first school spirit day on Wednesday, and so it's going to be Rainbow Day, which aligns with our theme of rainbow. And so staff and students are going to wear bright rainbow colors to show off their school spirit. Our MAP assessment begins tomorrow, so students in grades K through 4 will participate in the computer adaptive math and ELA assessment, which they do three times a year. And as you know, data is used to show growth areas of need and also to target instruction. We have been focused on implementing the classroom, responsive classroom practice of morning meeting, and it's four components of greeting, share, activity, and morning message. And it really sets the tone for a respectful, engaged learning environment, builds community, and merges really that academic and social and emotional learning and truly provides everyone with a sense of belonging and fun. Morning meeting is definitely a fun time. We'll be having our virtual open house on September 28th, and then I'll be starting some virtual coffee and conversations to begin in October. And the goal of those is really to build community and increase family engagement as well as to learn about the needs and wants of our community so that we can title... We can target our Title I family engagement funds. And just some upcoming dates for October. October 11th, I can't believe it's October almost, which is crazy, but October 11th is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and there's no school. And then the 12th is Indigenous Service Day, and we're looking at Science PD for that day. Happy to take any questions.
Before I do, I don't know if Jamie's still there. I will bring her flower and her certificate out to the school so that she can have those. I was hoping she'd be here so we would present them during her recognition, but I did appreciate your comments on her and just wanted her to know that they are there and we will get them to her. So going back to questions, let me comment on your dog thing first, or before I ask all of the other board members. I did pass by when I was taking my child from work at 10:30 one morning, and there was a pretty golden colored dog that was going right around and right into your area. So it's not just anything that they're there, they also are kind of there during the day as well. So something for other parents and everybody in your area to know about as well. Can you clarify before I turn it to them? You said you had 24 fully vaccinated out of 26, but then you said 2 didn't answer and 2 were not vaccinated, so...
No, let me go back to that part to make sure I have it right. 24 fully vaccinated. We asked... We gave four options in the survey, Priscilla, so this might help. The first one was, are you fully vaccinated? The second one, partially vaccinated. Third option, prefer not to answer, and then not vaccinated at all. So 24 respondents said that they were fully vaccinated and 2 preferred not to answer.
Okay. So you don't know on those two, they just didn't answer? Because you only have 26 staff members?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. And we didn't answer, ask the others, because I had it down under unfinished business, and we can go back and ask Susan if she knows, and Carrie, at this point, we can wait till the further down. But we probably should finish with asking if there's any questions for you first. Megan?
So I... I know we always say this, Laura, but I just love the Eagle Times because I don't have intel planted in your school. You're one of the ones I don't have, like, you know, a spy in there to tell me all the great stuff, so I appreciate getting that. I just can't say... It's just awesome. I'm jealous, I want to be a student in Jamie Douglas's 4th grade class. So thank you for doing that for those of us who don't have ground reports.
Yeah, it's a great platform, and thank you, Carrie, for bringing that platform to our SU. But we certainly love it because it is a colorful way to really share what's happening inside of our building and our learning community with the community at large, so thanks, Megan.
Jason, do you have anything?
No, I think everything's pretty well covered. I am very glad to hear about our vaccination rate. That's impressive, and I'm glad people are taking the steps forwards and doing it. Thank you for gathering the information.
Okay, thank you, Jason, thank you, Megan. Okay. Carrie, were you prepared to answer that question under...
I am.
...principal's... Or...
So at the vaccination rate at Central, we have 92% of our staff who are vaccinated, which is 57 out of 62 staff members. And that does include the early childhood special ed and the preschool staff as well who are in our building.
Thank you.
Surely. Surely.
And I've been told that we have sixty-one percent of the adults vaccinated in the skin or is treated vaccination number, but sixty-one percent of the adults.
Do you know if they're planning to or?
Was it one of the questions on the survey?
So that's based on the survey, not?
Yes.
Not actual checking, um?
No.
Maybe the nurse can update that too, um, at some point. Right now, they, uh, the nurses have done a shootout straight. But I know yours, your comment was there till eleven o'clock last night. That just, they're going above and beyond. And we just have to realize how.
I wouldn't know what to do without that.
Go ahead.
If I could just, um, comment on, on the nurses, um, I was in an email exchange with them, um, today where they're setting up, collecting that data now, the hard data. So not just the survey data, but, but looking at cards with both staff and students. So they're, they're, um, working out a protocol of how they're going to start doing it at all different schools. So we should have it soon.
Okay. So maybe for the next meeting, we'll have, um, consistent data across the, across the schools. And that'll be really good for us moving forward. Okay. Um, Flora, I apologize. I'm back to you, I think.
Hi, good evening. Um, so for our office, we, um, started already, um, meeting with the principals regarding, um, the first step for the budgets. Um, we did send out the assessment already to all the towns, uh, with the preliminary cash flow data that we got from the state. And, um, we got already payments from two of the towns. We got our, uh, payment from Grafton and a payment from Rockingham. So thank you to them. Um, I did follow up today with the other two towns that we have pending. Uh, we are planning to, um, have finalized our budgets by October eighteen. We have in-house auditors October sixth, um, and we are hoping to be presenting, um, budgets to the board once we have set up, um, everything with the SU, um, budget. So that way we could just then present to every other, um, board. So we are hoping that after we schedule the first meeting with the SU, then we'll be able to, uh, offer dates so we could just set up with everybody else. And that's all for now for our office.
Um, so I'm sorry, I missed the date, Flora. You, you are not planning, cause we, I know we had asked for that data by our, our October meeting. So I would think by the second meeting, but our meeting should be the, our second meeting should be the eighteen. You won't be ready to present that to us at that time?
Well, we, I had to present first to the SU. So once the SU have their, um, budget passed and said, then I could present to everybody else. Cause the SU is, gets assessed to every other town. Um, I just want to avoid the issue that we had last year that we started presenting budgets to the town without having anything set up with our SU first. So, um, to, on Wednesday, we have a meeting with the SU. Once, um, I get any feedback from the SU on their date and I set up a date with them, then I'll be able to set a date with everybody else.
Okay. So at this time, you don't know if you'll be ready for us in October?
Well, uh, if the SU gives me a date before that, um, yes. But the problem is that I have auditors the first week of October. And we are planning to present budgets once we have audits finalized because the audits give us as well information of surplus.
Okay. So I guess what, what the Rockingham Board was feeling was that if at all possible, we could have it for that meeting in October eighteen. So just be aware that that's what we would like at least. Um, and, and we'll see how that works out. We can talk about it more at the October fourth meeting that's coming up.
We, we can definitely have an update of where we are in the process. So.
Yeah. And maybe preliminary for certain categories or certain things that the principals have put in rather than having to wait for, um, the, the Supervisor Union numbers. Cause, um, that's only part of our budget. And if we don't get started, we'll end up with the same problems we had last year. Which I, we definitely don't want to end up with. We'd like to have, you know, have it go very smoothly this year. It would be really nice. And with Flora there, I think we can have that happen.
Well, we are in a better place this year. Like I said, we started already. I met with all the principals as well. Mr. Haas met with all of us and, uh, we are in a pretty good place. Everything is organized. Uh, we have a different approach this year. But, um, this year as well, we have auditors coming in on the first week of October. Meanwhile, last year they came in on the first week of December. Uh, so I believe, you know, we are going to be able to present budgets a lot sooner than last year and we'll be in a better place as well. I wouldn't want to have the same issue we had last year that we didn't have all the data and we had to come back and forth with a lot of information. So that's why I decided that auditors will come in beginning of October. Once we get all the information and feedback from the auditors, then we are going to feel more comfortable presenting information to the, um, boards.
Okay. We're still running later than what, what? I know we had talked about, you know, at the beginning of the budget year, you know, the finalized budget last year. So I think everybody was looking at, um, everything that being done in August and the auditors, you know, checking that at that point. And so I think we're still running probably behind what we want to do maybe next year. But, um, well, it, it sounds like at least it's, it's improving from what it was. So we really appreciate your extra work, Flora.
Thank you.
Welcome. Megan, did you have any questions for Flora?
Um, I, I don't. I, I jumped in to this board in October last year. And, and so I don't understand the normal cycles, the normal timeline. So, I mean, I, I remember us talking about it, Priscilla. Weren't we, weren't we doing this in December and January? So normally is it buttoned up much sooner than that?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect, Flora. Thank you.
There, there's no way of doing it sooner than September. You know, principals start the first week of September and we met with them already the second week of September. I, um, pulled back in, um, auditors meanwhile, you know, they usually come December, even January. So, um, I think we have a, a better approach and the soonest that we have been able to do it.
Yeah. I mean, if this is compared to FY twenty-one, I was so excited, like, yeah. But, I mean, I, I don't understand the process from, from the way Priscilla does, but I, I appreciate it. Um, last year was a trial by fire budget-wise. It was, it was interesting. We learned a lot, right? That's what I'll say about it. Thank you, Flora.
Jason Benson?
I'm just pleased that we appear to be well ahead this time this year. Thank you, Flora.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, all right. We're on unfinished this, business, um, policy, McKinney-Vento adoption. Um, can I have a motion on that from Megan or Jason?
Yeah, sure. Um, so is this, Priscilla, what is this? Help me. This is, we did the second reading last, last meeting, correct? Last full meeting?
We have to do two readings and then the adoption.
So is this the, the adoption phase?
Right.
Okay. So basically I would, I would make a motion to adopt the McKinney-Vento Act as presented?
Um, McKinney-Vento policy?
Sorry, I'm looking at the act. Okay. So I would make a motion to adopt the McKinney-Vento policy as presented.
Jason, do you want a second?
I second.
Okay. Um, is there any discussion? Do we need to discuss anything? We discussed it in the last two meetings.
Yeah, I don't have anything, Priscilla.
Um, all right. So, um, let's vote then. Megan?
Uh, that's a yes for me.
Hey, Jason?
Yes.
Hey, and I vote yes. So, um, the Rockingham Board has adopted the McKinney-Vento policy, which involves homeless. Um, all right. Let's move on. Seven B is vaccination percentage of staff by building a percentage of available students. And we've kind of already covered that under the other due. Is there any other discussion on, on that or anything else?
I found in my documents, twenty-five percent of our eligible students, uh, students that are eligible to be vaccinated have been vaccinated. But this is old data, like, I don't want, old.
The other thing that, that came up on the news today, just as something that's coming up, is that the, um, Pfizer is looking to move the five to twelve-year-olds, um, very soon to asking for a, um, approval on their emergency vaccine. It needs to be peer reviewed before they can do that, but they are, they are moving in that direction. Um, and what else? Megan? Anything else on that?
You know, I'm, I'm good. I, I, I know it's a work in progress and, and we're getting updated numbers as we go. Um, so no, I don't have anything further.
Okay. Jason?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, seven C, employee vaccination or weekly testing and masking? Um, let me first comment that, um, we did ask the negotiating teams whether, you know, the teachers were, would be in favor of the, the vaccinating or testing thing. And they seem to be really well on board with that. Um, we did have some information that, let me get the right side of, up of this paper and I'll maybe just read it. That, you know, because COVID nineteen is a risk of substantial, substantial harm to the students, families, employees of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union and its member districts. Um, the agent Vermont Agency of Education and the Vermont Department of Health have recommended vaccination and are testing adults in mask-wearing to prevent infection, hospitalization, and serious illness from COVID nineteen. Also, the SU and the Wyndham Northeast Educations Association are committed to reasonable safety measures to protect its students, families, and employees. The Rockingham Board feels that they are, are well committed to reasonable safety measures. Um, the parties, both the teachers and the SU may recognize the man, a mandate of reasonable safety measures to prevent infection, a disease. We can either try to get a, um, a bargaining agreement, um, which could be added to the CDA. Or we can do a motion, um, that involves vaccinating our teachers and with the current, the Dern, Pfizer, Johnson and Johnson. Um, it was suggested that possibly we want, would want to do a vaccination date of honor before October first with a second vaccination in a timely, consistent manner with medical advice. And that employees provide proof of vaccination to the administration upon completion or upon request. In lieu of we vaccinated, the employees would be tested for COVID nineteen at least once every seven days, providing proof to the administration and wearing masks. And we, if we passed a motion like that, we would want it to remain in effect at least and through until it was changed by the board. So I don't know what your thoughts are on it as board members. But I'm hoping for you to, you know, discuss that and let me know what you feel.
So Priscilla, can you explain to me, um, the difference between it being part of a, a collective bargaining agreement versus a motion? What does that mean? Cause I see it in the, in the letter or the, the thing sent out earlier. Uh, the parties agree to the following as a side letter of agreement to their collective bargaining.
It can be done that way, but that means that, um, that the association would have to sign up on it as well as, as our boards. Um, it's been both, done both ways in the state. It, the, um, Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union passed a motion that theirs would be vaccinated period. They did not even give the option of testing. Um, there have been others that have passed it with the motion that it would be vaccination or testing. And then there have been a couple that have gone with the side agreement, um, with the associations and come up with other additional things. It's kind of, my understanding is it's up to the board to decide what they want to do because it's out there. It's Biden is telling us that the private sector, it will be mandated. Um, it's, you know, if for a hundred or more employees, our district absolutely has a hundred more employees. Um, it may be eventually mandated through, um, federal government or the other. But I'm not sure whether we want to wait and do that. Um, our problem right now is that we could wait and do a memorandum of agreement. It's going to take longer. Um, the one we got from our lawyer, which is the one I sent to you that you're looking at and doing that, um, suggested a date of October first, twenty twenty-one. Um, that's coming up. That's, we, if, if we're going to have it October first, twenty twenty-one in Rockingham, we're going to have to do a motion tonight because we don't have the time to wait for that to happen. We can either do a motion that says we're doing it. We can do a motion to support, um, if, you know, support a, um, memor- memorandum of agreement. Um, we could do basically anything you want. It's, it's up to board members. I and they want to do.
I'm, I'm curious what Jason Benson thinks, um, about this and, and also what you think, Priscilla, about an MOU. I love MOUs in my line of work, um, because it usually means everybody's on the same page and no one feels forced into anything. But I understand the timing and everything. So I'm going to stop talking now that I've put out there what I'm interested in. And, and I'm willing, you know, this is new territory for me. So I'm, I'm willing to listen to any and all sides.
Okay. Well, let's hear from Jason Benson. Cause you're right. We, we need to hear from him.
I, I personally think that the opportunity is here that you can get the vaccine if you want, or you can submit to weekly testing. It's that we really don't have a choice at this point as far as the community safety, the student safety and everything else. When you consider what's going on out there, it's, I think it's pretty much a no-brainer that we need to put that in effect. Or test, well, testing in conjunction with masking. Because we can't just run around and pretend that there's nothing out there. You know, it's, it's out there. So. No, let's, um, MOU. I like that abbreviation. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm done. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Okay. All right. So what is your pleasure?
Well, uh, how about you, Priscilla? Uh, what's your opinion on this? Being on both sides of the seat here. I, I, you know, I, I, this is tough.
I'm just concerned about the October first. Personally, that seems like it's really gonna hit a lot of people in the wall. And I feel like they're being forced into something very rapidly. I'd like to go to the eighth personally.
Uh, I think that it gives them a choice. They can be vaccinated or tested. So we're not, we're not mandating that they absolutely have to be tested. I mean, absolutely have to be vaccinated. Um, they have the choice of being vaccinated or tested. I, it came up in a quick discussion the other day where one person was objecting to doing either one. But it seemed like the people that, um, were in that group were definitely in favor of going ahead with it. Um, um.
Has, has anybody else in our district, Priscilla, any of the other boards tackled this yet or is all eyes on us right now? Great.
It will be, uh, at the SU on Wednesday night. But if they put in October first, as, as indicated by Pietro, we will, we will not be able to put it in again until we have another board meeting. And I'm going to let Andy speak to this as well. Let me just kind of finish. I am in favor personally of putting in vaccinated or, or testing. Maybe more so this week than I was previously. I don't personally know of someone who was vaccinated that got sick, but my daughter does, and they were still in jeopardy. So I think the vaccination is important. I think it's, it's important for our students. We have still a whole bunch that are not able to be vaccinated. So I personally don't see putting it off, but that's just my opinion. That's not necessarily what, you know, what we want to do. It's, it's, it's a group decision. So I would go ahead, like Jason, I would go ahead, but maybe our superintendent would like to speak to it, maybe he feels differently.
Thank you. So I asked Mr. Lynn to put this together so we could start the conversation. And after the negotiation, the discussion there, I know that the NEA had a template, but I just wanted to get them borrowing. So I didn't put any parameters around October 1st, he just threw that in. So that is a, something, you know, a date that, it's just a date, an arbitrary date that he came up with. So I'm sure we could adjust that to match anything that would be, that would be workable in that sense. I think the other question that will be raised, whether it's a motion or an, or an MOU, will be if a, if an employee has to get a weekly testing, where will that test happen? Who will administer that test? And, you know, just the logistics around that piece of it. I don't know if that's something we fully thought out, how that would happen. Would that be part of the surveillance testing that the state is pushing out right now, which is optional, but would that then become a mandate for those employees? Would that be how that they would do, show the, the testing proof on, on a weekly basis? Or would they have to go to a, a medical provider? And I think that would be just something. I don't have an answer for, I don't know the answer, so I mean, I'm sure that would be a question that would be asked.
I think that's pretty easy personally. The reason, the reason I think it's easy is we do campus surveillance testing and i- is it in all three of our schools? I know it's in.
Yes, it's across the SU.
So it's in all our schools, so that's an option.
Yep.
Or I do know how easy it is to get an appointment, to get it tested in either Rattleboro or Springfield, which are right close. My child had to have COVID testing to be able to go back to work, although he has no, had no symptoms or anything else. I made the appointment. When we went, there were two lines. There was the line that had appointments, there was the line that didn't have appointments, so you could walk in as well. Pretty easy. We had the answer the next morning.
So I, I, I just, like, I could, you know, like, if a teacher, if we're not going to do it through surveillance, are we going to allow a teacher time off to go get the test? Like, those are just some of those logistics that aren't addressed in this MOU that, that Pietro put out. But I can, I, I just would rather have that all kind of cleaned up ahead of time, whether it's a motion or an MOU of teachers will do it through, you know, the, the state surveillance testing so that we're not getting into a teacher saying, well, I have to go to Rattleboro to get tested, so I need at least time to go to, that, that's, that's all I'm thinking of, so.
But they have, they have it outside of work hours and they do medical appointments outside of work hours too, so.
I understand that it's, I, I. While I haven't, while I've only sat here for eight, eight days, I've sat at other chairs and I know that those questions come up, and so that's why I'm trying to just be preemptive and thinking that out, that's all.
Appreciate your, your comments, I really do, and it gives us something, you know, to talk about here.
Priscilla, can I ask a question about what Mr. Haas just said? Is that basically saying if we go the MOU route versus a motion? MOU is a little bit more complicated, would, would require editing and, and potential rewriting versus a motion that we work out here as a group wouldn't really pertain to a collective bargaining agreement, right? It would just be for our staff in our district. I'm so sorry I have such stupid questions, but I don't want to get this wrong.
Well, that's, that's, that's a perfectly legitimate question, Megan, and, and yes, you, you've hit it exactly. You know, memorandum of agreement, you would have to go, it would go back and forth and it would take a little bit and it would do, do that. It might answer those extra questions, but a motion would be, yes, just for our Rockingham.
Right, now, now to the motion, as, as Jason brought up, you know, October 1st is a, is a quick deadline. In our motion, could we move the deadline to, you know, to October 31st and give folks some time to plan and, and make a decision? Is that, is that something we're allowed to do?
You could. I was thinking it was short myself to begin with, and then I thought, yes, but it's, if you're already vaccinated, all right, you're there. And if you can't get a vaccination before October 1st, then you can get a test. So I was thinking that, that made it not so bad a date for me. But we can move it to anything anybody wants. We don't have to have it, you know, from, on that date.
I think, Megan, kind of what you spoke to earlier about an MOU versus a motion, I think that's the main, while an MOU might take a, a little bit more time to go back and forth, it's, it, it's everybody at the table agreeing as opposed to what would feel like top-down. And I, I'm, I'm not passing judgment one way or the other. I mean, I'm just, that's where, that's where my head sits. I mean, I, I like to do things, you know, like the MOU route, that everyone's on the same page and not the other way, but I also, there is an easier season, so.
The only problem with that, Megan, is that an MOU then has to be, if, if it's worked out outside of our group, then it has to be something that we agree to, and if we don't agree to it, we're right back to a motion.
Okay.
Got it, okay. Which.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a back and forth.
It's likely.
So Priscilla, if we, if we go the, the motion route and eventually an MOU is worked out down the line that we can adopt, can we rescind or, or get rid of our own, what we moved for our little district and adopt a, a bigger MOU eventually? Is that an option for us?
And that's an option also.
Okay, so, I mean, if, because I, I, I'm trying to honor Jason Benson's thoughts, but I mean, a pandemic is just, it's, it's in our town, it's here, and, and there's, like he said, I, I don't want to sit on it too long either, so I, I would like to get something out there.
That's why I kind of, I had kind of written on the one that Pietro had given us. And do you have that in front of you?
I sure do, Priscilla, I've got it pulled up.
I had put, you know, you would, you would say, I moved that and then read in that first section, and then at the end of number one, you'd go, and that. And then read two and put or after that. Cross out the first line of three and just pull it. The employees shall be tested for COVID-19 at once, once every seven days, providing proof to administration. And wear masks. And this shall remain in effect until changed by the board. That way, it leaves it open to if there's an MOU that has other stuff and we want to accept that. We could do that. But like I said, that's what I would do, but that's just me, so I need to know what.
I'm on board with that, that makes sense.
I am too, Priscilla, if you could, I, I know you don't typically as a chair make motions, but if you could do that, because I'll butcher it and we'll be here another half hour trying to untangle it.
Or, or you could, if you, if you like it, you could, you could just say, so moved.
Well, I would, you know, I would like to see if, if you or Jason are, are amenable to an October 8th deadline, maybe? Move it out a week, give them an extra week.
Well, we've got the mask mandate right now in, in place until the 4th.
Right, to the 4th, we've got the mask mandate.
Which is on Monday unless the, unless the guidance, you know, or the board changes that. So, I mean, the 8th does give folks plenty of time to get geared up. It also, so here's the other side, is, would let schools kind of start to plan because there are some people that they do get affected by the, the vaccine and they don't feel well. And so the last, the last thing we want is every, all those, you know, those, those teachers who haven't been vaccinated, if they choose to run out and get vaccinated on the same day, and then we have a, a whole bunch of subs out that, that, or, you know, or so. So the 8th does give us some flexibility on spreading out.
I'm ready when you guys are.
The 8th, okay?
Yeah.
Jason?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. All right, then, then, do you want me to read it again then?
Yes, please.
I move that all employees shall become vaccinated against COVID-19 with one of the approved COVID-19 vaccines currently, Moderna, Pfizer, or Johnson &amp; Johnson. The first vaccination shall be administered on or before October 8, 2021. The second vaccination, if necessary, shall be timely, complete, consistent with medical advice, and that employees shall show proof of vaccination to the administration upon completion and/or upon request, or the employees shall be tested for COVID-19 at least once every seven days, providing proof to administration, and at the same time, continuing to wear masks. This shall remain in effect until changed by the board.
I'm going to go ahead and second that.
Okay. And do we need any more discussion?
Not for me.
Okay. Do you want to vote? Megan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. All right. Seven D.
One more question on that. Are we going to give them the chance to work out some of the logistics on where they're going to be tested? How, and who's paying for it? Do we need to include that at some point?
I'll, I'll work that out with the school nurses and, and I, I agree with, so I don't think it'll be an issue. I just wanted to make sure we had, we were making informed decisions, that's all.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And they just have to provide the proof, so they would either have to, you know, from the surveillance or they do want to get it somewhere else, but I would think it would be outside of school hours because we are providing it for them, so I don't think it should be any, any kind of an issue. Okay. Seven D, state masking protocol. I would suggest that the board follow the state suggested guidelines for masking through October 4th or until changed by the board, simple and straightforward because they've changed to be masked through the 4th at this point.
Can I go ahead and say so moved, Priscilla, so we can start talking about it?
And do we have a second? Jason Benson, do you want a second?
Yes, I have a microphone issue.
Okay. So, do we need some discussion on that?
Just so you know, Priscilla, I, I don't know if this happened recently, but Jen Burke has her hand up, and I don't know if you want to, you know, you're.
As soon as we finish.
Okay, okay.
Board.
No, I don't have any discussion at this point.
Me neither.
Jason?
No, I'm good.
Okay. That allows us to stay with the, the state guidelines and as long as the, it isn't brought up again by the board, if the state changes it, which they are scheduled to change on October 4th, as long as it's fine with, and we're comfortable with continuing with whatever they are suggesting, we would have to bring it up again as well. So it allows us to have a motion there that's protecting our children, especially with all the COVID situations that our nurses are having to face. Okay, so I will open up for public comment, and I'll start with you, Jen.
Sorry, thank you. Oh, no, I just, I just wanted to say as far as the masking, kind of as what I said at the last meeting, I'm hoping, I realize that the, right now, the ordinance is till October 4th with their state, but I'm hoping at the elementary level that we don't have to keep revisiting it every two weeks at this rate and just can say that we're keeping the primary or the elementary kids masked until we can get vaccinations. I just don't see, based on what we've seen these first 10 days of school, I just don't see that a lot's going to change between now and October 4th. And I, I know that, you know, you can't make necessarily an amendment to that right now, tonight, but I just kind of want to throw that out there that, that at least at the elementary level where kids are not able to get vaccinated, I think we kind of have to keep, keep the middle school and high school separate from what's happening with the elementaries. It's just, just wanted to throw that out there. And thank you, Megan, for the nice comments about all of us here, the nurses, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm going to comment, yeah, because that was one thing that our principals brought up in the meeting I had with them, was that we want to be aware that parents realize that even though the masking may be gotten, they may get to 80% at some of the schools, for example, the middle school in the seventh and eighth grade, that the state guidelines are still saying that you will have to continue masking for under 12 years old. And we're recognizing that that kind of is, is there. We do know that our, our teachers are keeping their children right in front of them so they can see what they may need, some help with, with the extra, taking the mask on, they can get, take them outside for breaks, they can, when they have snacks, they have them off, but they're providing the distancing to keep them safe. And I think that, you know, we're aware of that, I'm hoping parents were aware of that too, and that it really probably will have to continue. But the state guidelines are going to, are continuing, they're only saying the masking will be lifted if the 80% is met. And if we haven't met that, our motion allows that to continue because it's until it's changed by the board. So we won't have to revisit it on the 4th. Jen was why, one reason why I suggested it that way because I do recognize how much you nurses are doing and how right out straight you are right now and how much you're trying to keep our children in school and, but also protect them if somebody is positive or if they need to quarantine because of being positive. So we are well aware and we're trying to be, keep them safe as well. Does that help answer?
Yes, yeah, no, thank you, yep, thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment or? Because I did tell you that we do communication and public comment this time, and technically, communication commentments, we won't answer you back, but because we're including you as part of the discussion, I wanted to, you know, just kind of answer that. Jason, do you?
No, I'm, I'm good at this time. Other than, I, I think we do need to make a discernible difference for the elementary level and those that cannot get the vaccine. Certainly, keep them masked as long as possible.
And the state is doing that in their, in their guidelines.
Yeah, yeah.
Megan?
I'm good, Priscilla.
So let's call the, call the question then. Megan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, so that passes too. All right, we're down to 8A. I wanted to open up the board procedures just a little bit on the appointments because the question had come up in, because of open meeting laws, and Megan has been doing a lot of research on open meeting laws, I was going to put her on, on. I was going to put her on the, on the, there, make her, tell us about it, but basically.
Don't you dare.
Okay, I'll kind of summarize them. We try to be really careful and make sure that all of our business is conducted in the public, and that we don't violate it. If we get three of us together, we're really limited, and we can't, aren't supposed to be discussing any business, because then it would violate it, because then we're not open and transparent for everybody, and all of our constituents, and all of our employees and staff members, and all of those things. So we try to be really careful, and the reason I put it on here in the discussion was because we were trying to get a new board member to replace George, and we were kind of almost getting to the point where we were starting to border on violating that if we continued any kind of discussion. So I wanted it on here so that we could do that, because we try, we're trying really hard. I know I'm trying extremely hard to follow all the policies, and all of the procedures, and all of the statutes, and all of that, and I make mistakes too. So I wanted it on here to open it up and discuss. Basically, what I've been doing for the board openings was that, I know it was posted at the central office, but I did suggest too that we might want to put it in the shopper and the Brattleboro reformer, because those are the two that were approved in March. And I suggested that we get one ready to put in. It was not put in yet, because we needed to see whether my other board members wanted to do this or not. And then I also asked for a letter to be sent either to the board chair or to the superintendent, that included background, what would make the person a good choice, and the reasons for wanting to be on the board. Now, that's kind of because at the time that I was doing that, there were two people for the one position that was coming up, and we were going to be having to make a decision over who it was. It's not as pertinent if we don't have all those candidates for doing it, although we kind of would probably like to have that person at least speak to us about their reasons for wanting to be here, so we could kind of put them in the right committees and ask them to work on some of the board stuff. I don't know, what is, what is your pleasure, Megan and Jason, on, you know, working to get the members? I reached out to the principals and see if they could let their people, their parents know, and that. Your opinions. Go ahead, Megan.
So, yeah, so Priscilla, we're in a different spot than we were even a day ago. We had someone interested, and there's just an emergency situation around that, and they're not able to. So we're kind of back to zero, so I think it's very important that we do post. We have to get it out there, and, you know, I'm hoping, I would really love to have some Saxon's River parental representation, so if there's any SRES folks out there listening, and we need each year. I technically can qualify as a parent for either, but I'd be willing to also, I would love a central or middle school parent also, so there's, you know, we're kind of covering, we have a community member, we have a former teacher, we have parents from each school. I would, that's my dream composition of the board. And now, Priscilla, I think, as a board, it'd probably be a good idea for us to consider posting, because we're out of options, I believe.
Okay. Jason, what would you like to add?
Nothing, just echo what Megan said there. We need to post, we need to fill some seats. I'm just a little concerned, come March, what's going to happen? Is this the board for the next two years? I don't know. You know, and I'm hoping that some other community members are going to want to get involved here, but we'll see. That's all.
So, Priscilla, would you be open for a motion to, for the board to post the vacancies in the shopper and the Brattleboro reformer?
I would be willing for a motion, although if.
Or do we wait? Do we have to wait until we finish some business later on, and maybe, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we don't absolutely have to.
Okay, okay. Pump the brakes on this. I don't, I don't have to, we don't have to have a motion or anything right now. We have some other business to take care of tonight, I think.
Okay. Okay. So do we want to move on? We've already done the C. Recognition of our recent board chair. I have a certificate for George. I don't know if he's listening, but I'm going to read it for this, and we'll have to get it to him, because he's not here. It's a certificate of appreciation. It's, this certificate is hereby awarded to George Smith, in appreciation of devoted and invaluable services rendered to the Rockingham School Board, member 2019 to 2021, Chair 2020 to 2021. Given this 20th day of September 2021, and it's signed to be signed by all of our board members, and for myself, Priscilla Lambert. So we will get that to George, since he's not here, and embarrass him because he's not. Okay.
Thank you for doing that, Priscilla.
You're welcome. All right. Appointments and resignations. We have resignation of 8th grade science teacher to be in executive session. And then we have the board member, Mr. Haas, have you received any notice of interest for the board position?
I have not, but he checked with the board.
And I have not received any notice. Megan, did you? Am I, was I hearing you?
Yeah, there was at one point a couple of weeks ago, but the situation has changed. So right now, we have zero candidates.
I was hoping. Okay, and Jason Benson, did you have anybody that?
No, and I've even asked a few people that were on other boards recently, and they were all set.
Okay. I, Jason is not here tonight to confirm that he wanted to resign. But I do have his letter, and I will read it to you, and then you can decide what you want to do on that. He said, Dear Rockingham Board, tonight is my last day on the Rockingham Board. I will not be part of this board any longer. This also means I won't be coming to WNESU meetings or negotiations. I am staying on the high school board, because he's a member there. Thank you, Jason Terry. Do we want to act on that, since he's not here, and accept it as a resignation? Or what is your preference, since he's put it in writing?
I would move to accept his letter of resignation.
So I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved to accept his letter of resignation and seconded. How do you vote, Megan?
I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Okay, so his resignation was accepted. He stopped at the negotiations. I was the alternate for that, and I did go to the meeting the other night, and I can update you in executive session on that as well, since it's under that, he's resigned. He was on the WNESU. Both of you are alternates for that, so at this point, I guess, if you can both show up.
We made it to the big leagues, Benson.
Oh, yeah. Who draws the straw this week?
There's no more straws left. We're all going.
Uh-oh.
Because we have three positions on the WNESU board, and that's the three of us that are that are key at this time, so I guess. And if you get a member, then we will have an alternate at that point, so over your own head. I think, also, he was on transportation, and Jason, I think you were interested in doing that. Because your job involves that type of thing.
That's what I do for work, is I'm the maintenance director for the town of Westminster Highway Department, so kind of makes sense. A little familiar with the trucks.
Since we're under appointments, we'll appoint you for that. Most of the other things, I think, were general, were on budget. He was not on policy. George and I are on policy, and I'm on policy still. I don't want to spread you too thin, you guys. I know I'm spread a little thin, so I don't want to overload you too much, but anything you can step up and do is greatly appreciated.
We already decided I was going to be on policy as well, if we ever.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, well, on the Rockingham policy, we're all on it. And on the WNESU one, if you want to do, well, that's great.
Yeah.
That would be good. I'll just, I'll write that down. We haven't, I'm chair of that, so we haven't had a meeting with all the turmoil and the changes in the LSU office and everything that's going on. We've, I've been putting that off. We were able to get that one policy done, but I will be checking on what other policies and setting a meeting very shortly. Okay. So I would, do you want to do director's comments before the executive session, or after?
Yeah, let's do that.
You want to do that first? Okay, so Megan, go gear up.
Yeah, so I just, I say it over and over, but I'm just so grateful for everybody. These are unprecedented times. If there was a manual that came with surviving a pandemic in a school openings, I didn't get it. Apparently, everybody else did. You guys are doing amazing. I also wanted to take a quick second and let principals know that on the 27th is the, I'm getting it wrong now, but it's the, September 27th is the, I think it's the day of the family. Anyway, principals, be on the lookout. From Parks Place, Megan, I'm going to be coming at you. Some community groups want to do some some really cute activities for families, have some resources available. So you're going to be hearing from me from my other hat. We're putting together Deb Whitkis with Greater Falls Connections. We're going to be getting in touch with you guys to help families celebrate togetherness and having meals together at home usually is what they've done in the past. So just be on the lookout for an email from Deb Whitkis and I.
Jason?
I think I'm pretty much talked out for tonight. I covered everything I covered and all the other things, so, yeah, thank you.
All right. And then, I am so appreciative of my board members, of the school staff, our administration, our teachers, our parents, our support staff, and everybody that works in those places. Just really, really appreciate them. And I'd like to say that everybody be patient, be kind to others, and just stay safe in whatever you're doing. We will get through this together. And just keep that in mind. Everybody is dealing with a whole set of different issues. We are not walking in their shoes. We don't know what's going on in their lives. And we just want to be kind and considerate, and keep. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
It's all moved.
Okay, we need to do it with, let me see if I can find that wording here. I had it here.
Enter into executive session.
Okay. Can I add to that, Jason? Is that okay?
Please do.
Moved to go into executive session to discuss appointment reservation and negotiations that pretty much are general public knowledge would clearly place a public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage.
Yes, so moved. Yeah, I hear that amendment there, yep.
Megan, do you want to second that?
I seconded it, and I was muted. I promise I seconded it. Sorry.
Okay. All right, so let's follow. Megan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and I'm assuming that's asking our administration to also. Oh, yeah, I didn't add that. Okay. So we'll go into executive session.